I'll ask you to rise for the pledge of allegiance. We're kind of a little informal this morning. We don't even have name tags, so I'm going to ask the folks starting at that end to introduce themselves.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Steve Collins.
Good morning, John Nowakowski.
Hello, Jean Totten.
Good morning, John Fast.
Good morning, Kat Fimmel.
Good morning, Jim Ruff.
Jeff Darby.
And on line?
And coming in from somewhere else, we have Karen McAdam and Denny Nichols. And we're hoping they're still there.
We hope.
Yes, good morning. This is Karen McAdam. I'm here.
Turn yourself down just a touch.
Kat, Denny's not on. We don't have Denny.
Are we going to try to get him back? No, maybe, okay. Jean?
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Just a note, would you please all put your phones on silence? We will do our best to remind you at the end to turn them back on. Trying to think if there's any other housekeeping tips. We've introduced ourselves.
We're videotaping.
Are we having our members sign in and speak?
Yes, yes, we are. That's why we're having this meeting. Okay, as you can see, it's being video recorded. There's no reason for anyone to be recording the meeting from the floor. Okay, thank you for joining us this morning. We're having a conversation about improvements in our budget decision process and in our capital expenditures process. This session is about these two aspects of the budget. And as we indicated in the blast, we're not taking questions today about the 2024 budget because the Budget and Finance Committee is continuing its work to create the 2024 budget. We're talking about this now, as we're in the midst of this budget process, and we want to keep you informed on the process. And we, we hope that by having this conversation today, we can get you ready for the budget when it actually arrives. Tentatively, the 2024 budget will be presented to the board at the October Board Meeting, I believe. Before we begin the discussion about the budget, I did want to give you some updates on some projects that we are working on. The applications for the general manager position were due earlier this month. And right now, we're in the winnowing process. There were a lot of people interested in the position. And tentatively, we are scheduled to begin interviews in mid-September for this position. We've experienced some issues with the softball project, all related to changes in financing. And I might well state that this is going to happen to most of our projects. The estimates for the projects were given a number of years ago. Time has passed. We've lived through a pandemic, and prices have increased. And so we're having to go out. The initial bids were far too high, and we're having to go out and redo the bidding process. And we're in the midst of that right now. The Technology Committee members have continued to meet regularly in support of the technology program and working on getting a new website. The Strategic Alternatives Committee continues to meet weekly and has completed the first of two sessions with an architect that's coming to assist the members of the committee to fully understand what is or is not possible to put here at Mountain View. They made a lot of progress, I think, after the first meeting, and, and I think we're in a very good position. Once the recommendations are more firm, the architect will be able to identify what the estimate is to perform the work that the committee is recommending. Based on what we learned there, we may have to make some additional changes. Now that you're up to speed on these projects, I'm going to go ahead and turn things over to Treasurer Fast.
Thank you. Welcome, fellow members. Today, I'm going to go through a PowerPoint slide. And I want to first ask, if I show hands, how many people want to ask questions as we go along? And how many people want to ask at the end? Okay, it looks like most don't care, but those that do, it would be at the end. All right. Can you put down the PowerPoint? And I'm going to have to ask you to change slides. So today's presentation is on what we've been doing all summer. And that is trying to find improvement opportunities in our budget process so that the members understand what's in the budget, what's not in the budget, what trade-offs have been made, and how it fits into a larger-term plan for Sun City. Next slide. So if I were to say the goals of our work this summer, we are looking to, and this comes out of the Long Range Planning Committee, adopt a new mission, vision, and value statement. One of the things I would ask is that we will publish the proposed mission, vision, and value statement, and that you send any comments you have or concerns to the RCSC offices so that we can collate them and see if we're, how far on the mark or off the mark we are. This has been through the Long Range Planning Committee. It was introduced, I think, yesterday at the Budget, Finance and Budget Committee. We're trying to reach out to as many people as possible on this. And, you know, I know a lot of people will say, oh, gosh, well, it's just a bunch of words, but it really is words that we need to live by if we're serious about what we want Sun City to be. The second thing we are looking to do is to develop what's called a five-year capital improvement plan. Now, most communities, recreational communities in particular, have a five-year capital improvement plan that tells you what to expect to replace based on an evaluation and its end of life. We haven't, in the past, we have not had that plan in place. And we have instead had a 15-year PIF plan that is very difficult, I think, for anyone to understand what's coming next. So our, our goal is to have at least a preliminary plan. And I will tell you, we're well on our way. We've made giant strides, and Kevin has completed the initial pass-through of what's called a reserve study to show us what's expiring, you know, what, what's reaching the end of the life, what the condition of our assets are, so on and so forth. And we also have a list of 2,500 component assets at least. So there's just been a lot of work on this and a lot of data. But in the end, what I hope you will see is every replacement planned for the next five years. And that will give you the foundation for how much money is there out there, because I think that's what's on some people's mind. Up, back. This is going to be my proposal, so don't throw stones at any of the other board members. I would like to simplify the financial structure so that we only really have two accounts. We have expense accounts and capital accounts. Capital accounts are things that are lasting multiple years. Expense accounts, the benefit is within the year. I think this will make it simpler for all the members to understand our financial position and get rid of things like carry forward, carry back, PIF-funded projects, not PIF-funded projects, so on and so forth. So I look forward to the opportunity to present a case on why I think this should, should be undertaken. The next thing, I think, there's almost, oh, did you want to ask a question? Yes, please. Yeah, so that cap, the capital plan would address big and large, a big and small, big and large. That's great. Big and small projects. So that, so it just kind of smooshes it all together.
Oh, I was just, yeah, I was just trying to clarify. So you have capital and expenses, which is fabulous. So the projects, then, I think you just answered that, would come out of capital versus expenses?
Yes.
And would expenses be for maintenance, then, maintaining projects?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear it.
Would expenses be for maintaining the centers and, you know, things that come up?
For, on the expense side, it would be the cost to run the operations, salary, utilities, minor repairs to things, you know, fixing a door or something. I'm trying to think what else, maybe insurance, taxes, those kinds of things.
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Okay. I think the other thing that we've already achieved is we've, we've made this a collaborative effort. So the reason that we're all sitting here today, I think, for the first time in recent RCSC history, is we're sharing with you the budget in process. We're not sharing with you the budget. We're sharing with you the process, and when, as the budget gets formulated, you'll see the budget itself and have an opportunity to pick and poke. We need member input, and this, this is the first step, so don't be surprised if it's not perfect. And the last thing, which is probably the first thing you came to hear, is we need to review and approve a 2024 budget. The timeframe for that is that it will be introduced, hopefully before the board meeting, and then read for the first time at the October Board Meeting, and then read for the second time at the November Board Meeting. Next. So one of the problems we, we faced when we looked at the budget, and Kevin kind of drilled on me for this, he said, well, how do I budget if I don't know what you want to be? So I've broken this down to the what and the how. Now, go ahead. The what is what do we want to be? What are our quality standards? What are, what amenities do we want to have? Where do we want to have them? All those things that we can reasonably afford. The how is how are we going to get there? And that's, of course, going to be your, part of your funding equation, part of your trade-offs as far as what gets in, what gets out, how you grade projects, so on and so forth. And to start the process, we have to know where we are currently. And one of the things I think we've discovered, and I don't think this is out of school to, share it, is that we have $20 million of, we're going to call them deferred projects or projects that haven't been addressed. So our feeling on the Budget Committee, and I hope people that have attended the meetings will understand, is we're kind of starting out behind the finishing, behind the starting line. And we need to get caught up to the starting line and then set a plan in place to get to where we want to be. So we're looking, we're looking at the gap analysis, and right now, what Kevin is in the process of doing is not preparing one budget, but preparing two. One is, let's let us stay, let's keep us as far behind as we are now, but not let us get farther behind, if that's a fair way of saying it. The second is, what do we need to do in order to move forward to get not only to the starting line, but to begin the process, and it's a long process, to get to where we want to be with respect to quality standards, maintenance standards, capital standards, all of those things? Okay? So this is the concept that we're, we're applying. And as you can see, it's a pyramid. And the pyramid has to start with your mission, vision, and values. And so that's what we're going to distribute to everybody, is mission, vision, and values. And when you look at these and comment on them, I hope that what you'll say is, is that what I want to be? Is that what I want my community to be? Is that what I want? You know, if, if somebody pulls these up on the internet, well, they think, wow, this is a great place. Or at least it's striving to be. And I'll tell you, we went through, I bet you several hundred hours of debate. And Jerry, if you wouldn't mind standing up for a moment? You? She was our facilitator. God bless. She went through a lot with everybody's opinion and helped us all boil it down to what we have today. The second part of our pyramid is a strategic plan. You know, the mission, vision, and values is pretty vague. It's pretty broad. The strategic plan is that five-year plan we're talking about. That's how we're going to get there. We don't have that today. I'll be honest with you. And we're going to try to create one. It's going to be a lot of work. But I think it'll be very worthwhile once it's created, particularly if it's combined with improvements in reporting so that the members, when they see the budget, can understand it without a PhD in accounting. And the last thing, of course, which is the first thing you have to work on, is next year's budget, because it's a constant cycle, and you got to keep up with the, the cycle. And so in conjunction with these three, two other plans, we're working on two budgets. The base case, keep us as far behind as we are now. The improvement case, which is start on the path to getting to where we want to be, as defined by the mission, vision, and values. One of the things, and I know these are just big words and whatnot, but one of the things that is key here to me is that you have line of sight alignment between all three elements of that triangle. So you don't do something in your budget that contradicts your five-year plan, and your five-year plan doesn't contradict your mission, vision, and values. So those are the guardrails, if you will, that can be applied to keep the, the budgeting process on track. One thing I'll say with a five-year plan, it's not cast in stone. It's a five-year rolling plan. So if circumstances change, well, you set a five-year plan that says, I want an IBM PC on all of our desks, and it turns out IBM no longer makes PCs, you're going to modify your plan. And that has to be in an open and honest process. Next. So here's what the committee came up to, and I really hope that you, you take a serious look at this. They said our vision should be to be a national leader in 55-plus socially active lifestyle communities. I think there's a number of things you'll notice aren't there. The word premier, the word the leader, the a leader. We are, we were the original. This is where the idea started, and this is where we can begin to reinvent it and engage our membership. But ultimately, all of those things that we do should be set around, do we want to be a leader in 55-plus social lifestyle communities? What's the, so let me ask you, what's the benefit for you? Well, I think the benefit for you is in your, is one, in your house prices, and two, is in the amenities you enjoy. So. What's the next one? Up, nope. And then, as our mission, we want to maintain a financially sustainable corporation that provides our members with a wide range of high-quality amenities, recreational opportunities, and social activities to enhance each member's sense of well-being and purpose. I think the two words you want to focus on there, that the committee focused on, is financial sustainability, i.e., we have the plan in place, and we know it's doable, and high quality. And I think there's been a number of comments that I've received that our quality has slipped. So, and hopefully that will, will take care of that. Next. Is everyone familiar with those commercials that compare my product to Brand X? Okay, well, there's, this is a brand, other community is Brand X. And there's a lot of numbers on here, but let me just kind of summarize them for you if I could. Brand X is about half the size in facilities, as we are, about half, half of our net worth. They run on the same budget that we do, essentially. They have a detailed five-year plan. They're very proactive in their maintenance. And I guess if I could say, if you had a takeaway from this, we're trying to run something twice as big on half, on the same amount of money. And the only thing that we can, the only way we can do that is let things go, let, you know, deteriorate, let the maintenance, as we call it, bubble gum and, and shoestring until it breaks for the last time. So I'm very proud to be in Sun City. I think it's got, it's a wonderful community. I think we have great amenities. We have more, I think, than anybody else. That's both a blessing and a curse, because we have more to maintain. But we also have more opportunities. So I think what this shows us is that we have probably, over the years, made budget by cutting maintenance. Okay, next. The other thing we had to look at is, you know, RCSC has certain financial constraints that are put in there for your protection. The founders of RCSC, in their infinite wisdom, decided that they didn't want to burden members with debt. And that was a relatively novel concept back in the time. So for all intents and purposes, we can't borrow money. Now, there's a, there's a little, I think we can borrow $750,000 or something like that. And, but that, you know, if we were in the position of borrowing, it wouldn't be for $750,000. It'd be for a lot more. The other thing is that we can't sell assets. And you may have noticed that when people come up and say, well, why can't we just buy the land across from X, Y, and Z? We can. We just can never sell it. It always has to be there for the benefit of the members. And that was put in there for your, your protection. This is going to be here, basically debt-free. No one's going to sell these assets. Also, of course, there is no ability to pay dividends. There's no stock buybacks or anything like that that you find in corporate finance. So it's a very embedded financial conservatism that's in our structure. And I, I will fight anyone that goes to try to change that. And the last one is, and I don't, I have a, a problem with this, is we have set a limit on what we can use. The PIF funding, does everyone understand what the PIF is? That fee that new buyers pay when they buy into our community? It's called Preservation and Improvement Fund. Unlike other communities, somewhere along the line, we decided to put a limitation on what we can spend it on. So we said, whatever it is we want to spend has to be over $300,000 or equal to or greater than $300,000 and equal to or greater than 15 years. Yes, I know, these signs are reversed. Okay? So what's, what's the changes? I think we've, we've kind of already gone through them in the beginning, but I want to tell you what I told you, then tell you again. We are trying to change from a management-driven, minimal review, closed process, which is much more efficient, to a member-management partnership with a full discussion and review and as open a process as we can make it and still meet the timelines. And, you know, we welcome your views on, on different things. Even switching to this process, we're not going to gain unanimous agreement. But that's okay. It's healthy. We can have the disagreements, and that's a healthy factor in our community, as long as, as the independent reminds us, we keep it civil. So we're welcoming disagreements. Is there another one? Okay, so this is the bottom line. We'd like to obtain an agreement on a revised mission, vision, and value statement, I would hope by the September Board Meeting. And I'm speaking only for myself. Establish a supportive, rolling, five-year capital improvement plan, however rough it may be. A start. Establish an annual budget that supports that plan. Develop metrics to measure the success of RCSC. How do we know it's successful, not successful? Number of complaints, the, you know, whatever it is, what is it that makes us, maybe it's a customer satisfaction survey. I don't know. What is it that makes us, maybe it's a customer satisfaction survey, I don't know. Develop a performance feedback loop. What's a performance feedback loop? Well, that tells you that when those measurements of success come in as failing or not adequate, you're doing something about it. And you're doing something about it in real time, not years down the road. Course correct as necessary. Monitor trends to assure the mission, vision, and values are appropriate, and insist that all decisions are data-driven. Lots of words. It's a big task. I'm proud to be a part of it, and I'm proud of the committee that's taken on this task and met all summer long to try to come up with an improvement for us, the members. So I'd ask you this, and I know you'll, we'll have people in this room that disagree with the current board, past board, you know, they'll disagree with each other, so on and so forth. Where we come together is, I would ask you to ask yourself, what does it take to make you proud to be a Sun Cityan? I.e., a member of this community? With that, I would ask you, what do you want Sun City to be? Those two items were defined in 1960 for the original pioneers. It's 2023, I think it's well time we make sure that we have a good definition of what those are. And the last, I would say, is, and most powerful, if you ask yourself how you can help. Thanks.
Yes, please.
Could you hold on for one sec?
Let's give you a microphone.
When a, when a, when a budget is approved, are all the funds for that budget for each of the different entities, is the complete budget used?
Oh, okay. When a budget is approved, all of those funds are authorized to be spent.
Are they?
Yes, they're authorized to be spent. Now, I, I know what your question is, and I'm going to answer it. In any budget, there are variations, variations up and down. The essence is in your household. What my point of view would be, does the budget have built-in bias? And if it does, I want it gone.
Shouldn't that be addressed prior to the budget being approved?
Can you speak up into the microphone?
I said, shouldn't that be addressed prior to the budget being approved? I mean, once the budget is submitted, and the board approves the budget, then the budget should be followed, and the monies that were allocated, spent. Right, wrong?
Yes, the, we're talking about the annual budget?
I'm talk, sure.
Okay. Yes. Once the Finance and Budget Committee are done with, with recommending the budget, they should be assured that there is no built-in bias, that we will run under-budget or over-budget. If that's a way to answer your question.
Are there any, is there a bonus structure set up for over or under, dependent upon budget?
And just for the directors, and it's a, you know, multi-billion dollar. We don't get paid. I'm, I'm sorry. No, there is no bonus, there is, there is no bonus program based on whether you're over or under budget. The money that's collected is required by Title X, our Articles of Incorporation, our bylaws, our board policies, to be spent on the benefit of members.
So there is no budget system for the management?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Director Fast, if I can interject something. If I, once I get on. Once a budget, quote unquote, annual budget is approved, it gives authorization to the membership team and the staff to expend those monies up to that budget amount. They have authority to do so for any item within there. They do not need to go back. We do not have a, like some governmental agencies, a line item veto, where we can go back and say, "We're going to cancel, we're not going to do this item, we're not going to do that item." Once it's approved, they have authorization to proceed up to that dollar value on any item within, within that budget. The general manager also has authorization to proceed up to $25,000 on any expenditure not within the budget. Twenty-five grand, that's, that's their responsibility. Anything over that, he's got to come back to the board and say, "You need to change this, we need to alter this, we need to vary that." I hope that helps understand your question.
Another question. My name is Jeff Bach.
Hi, Jeff.
The number of people that are new coming into the Sun City residential area, how many per year are we bringing in, on average?
On average, 1,750. Home sales.
Home sales.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Exactly. Okay, I got you. And we're, and each of those, when they do their entry every year, for that particular year, your, your entry fee is what, $3,500?
I believe it's, it's currently $4,000.
$4,000, okay. It would appear to me that with that amount of money coming in each year, you have about $4.5 million of entry money coming in to match up, over a five-year period, that $20 million you need to complete the construction items or the capital items you outlined originally, which was about 20 million.
That is, that's very true, that, that is an approach.
Okay.
It just means that, I, I think, I don't know about your 4.5 million, but there are things that we have to do. The Arizona Department of Water Resources requires us to take steps to lower water usage. So there's, there's, but we can put the other projects, you can put on a slow, slower train and stretch them out.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, that's, that's an approach. And again, I guess the question is, what do you want to be?
That's right. Okay, thank you.
If I can interject. That $4,000 entry fee that's paid is kept in a separate account. It's called our PIF, Preservation and Improvement Fund. And there are limitations, as Director Fast mentioned, on, on how that money can be spent. So it is not thrown into our annual operations budget. It is kept independent of that operations.
And I would like to see that changed. Not to include it in the operations budget, but to allow it to be spent on a number, any number of capital things. Thank you.
If I can interject again, is that a personal or a board?
That is something I'll be advocating to the board from a personal standpoint. Did I dodge your question?
That was my question, are you saying you want to mix the PIF money in with the general money? Are you saying you want to mix the PIF funds in the general budget?
No, I want to have the PIF fund combined with the capital out, used for all capital as is part of the assessment. So I want to budget both the operational, not me personally, I want our management to do it, both our operational expenses and our capital improvements, and I want the members to see what those capital improvements are that will be scheduled.
So the current, what we currently call PIF?
Yes.
Under your plan, that money could be used to re-carpet an office? In, in, in practice?
If that's a capital item, I suppose. I guess the, the thing that, I'll give you a live example of why I'm at the position I am. The sundial humidifiers are, had, had failed. Because they don't qualify for the PIF, what we're doing is replacing one at a time, jiggering the system, so that the new ones work with the old ones. And then we'll, when we have the money, we'll replace another one. That's not a rational decision, in my mind.
But then the PIF, the PIF bank account would no longer be available to do major things, like Mountain View, or do something for a golf course, or?
No, no.
Okay, so that would disappear.
Yeah, yeah, those, those would be, those would be budgeted in the five-year plan, just like everything else.
Okay, that's my question, thank you.
Again, I'm going to interject with Director Fast's statement on the sundial dehumidifiers. Yes, we need two of them, and they're up to a half a million dollars apiece. And unfortunately, because of circumstances beyond our control, it takes a year plus to get them, and we can get one at a time. That's our constraint that we have to deal with. We can't go and get two of them, because the manufacturer says we want $100,000 upfront, and you can order them, and you'll get it somewhere between 12 and 18 months. That's a well-known company who moved all their facilities out of the U.S. We're stuck with it. There is nobody else that we know that makes one that's big enough to do that. It's a constraint. So even if we had dollars today to pay for them, we're looking at getting one this year, and one in 18 to 24 months.
We ordered two.
We, we did put two on order.
Mr. Fast? Director Fast?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, the, the PIF, the safeguards they put on the PIF was to make sure that money, once you, you said, "I want to build a new Mountain View." So the money in the PIF started adding up until there was enough money in there to build the project, because we can't go into debt. So that money was locked in there, and it was safe. So that you, if you started a big project, you knew the money was there, you were going to be able to build and finish the project. If all of a sudden you put that somewhere else where you can keep taking things out of it, those funds could disappear. And that's the part that I worry about, is we always had that safeguard for our projects coming up. We knew the money was there, and it was going to be there when we went to build them. Thank you.
Please, please know that, that, that isn't what is in place today. It would have to be a recommendation that runs through the Budget Committee, and it would have to be approved by the board.
That's what I was just going to say. And as you can tell, we, we embrace disagreement.
Okay, I have a comment, too. I, I am David Clausen, and I actually like the proposal, because I think that it fits more directly into corporate planning, five-year budgeting, five-year planning of both capital and expense is the way it's typically done in corporations around the country and the world. So from that standpoint, I think it does put that structure in, that, that alignment of vision, five-year plan, and budget, and that's very important. I do have, I do acknowledge the concern for large projects. Do we, do we have enough distance planning so that those that we need 15, 20 million dollars, or, you know, that we have that money there? But overall, I, I like the approach. I think it's very, very energetic, and I applaud and admire all of you board members who spend so much time doing this for us.
Maybe one, one final comment, I didn't mean to get us off on that. That, as Kat said, that, that's something that has, will come up through the Finance and Budget Committee, if they feel that's correct as a recommendation. Then we'll go out for the, the board to debate it in an open forum, so that, you know, you'll see. And there, there are multiple valid views. I, Steve and John, I agree 100%. So we'll just have to let it, yeah, be an open debate.
Oh, you want me to stand up? I mean, when you're thinking about the budget, I want everybody to keep in mind, because one thing, when they were doing the comparison, when he had the comparison chart up there, and he compared us to the other community, there's, there's a couple of important issues that we need to make sure we keep in mind. The first one is, the average household income for Sun City is $58,000. And if you're comparing us to Sun City West, which everybody always wants to do, the average household income for Sun City West is $74,000. People on, below the poverty level in Sun City is 3,700. People below the poverty level in Sun City West is 1,600. So when you're thinking of a budget, and you're thinking about raising stuff and raising stuff, we don't want people out here losing their houses. We have to keep in mind that we got to keep, we have people out here because they can afford to live here. We don't want to make it unaffordable. So and the median household income for Sun City is 46,000. And so we just see that pretty much Sun City West is about 20, 25,000 above what we have people here, and we have a lot, almost twice as many, almost three times as many below the poverty level. So we need to keep that in mind.
Darling, thank you very much. That's something that's been on the forefront of my mind as well. And when, again, just free thinking, I don't want to discuss this, because I'm going to propose it to the board, but what I would propose that is when members get the opportunity to pay their fees, if they're able, and if they're willing, they can contribute to help a neighbor out. You may think that's a great, novel idea, it's not. That's, it came from the Jubilee Book, and the first members, when they initiated a fee, double-paid their fees so that, because they knew their neighbors couldn't afford it. So I think that's great, and I think the foundation is, is another avenue, and we need to make sure that nobody, and I do mean nobody, is without the basic life necessities because of any increase or adjustment.
Yes, John?
Yes, and he mentioned the foundation. You'd be surprised, we don't have very many people apply for the, the benefit. I don't know, you know, our generation, they're too proud, or whatever it is. But if you're low-income, you can get the benefit to pay, pay your fees. And we need them to do that. We need them to step forward for, swallow the pride and say, "Hey, help me. We've got the money, it's in there. We can help so many more families if you just ask." So.
So, come see me, I'll help you." Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Hi, John. I just want to say, this is a great idea. I mean, I, it just feels so much more common sense, and I applaud you for that. But of course, I have some questions. Now, the biggest one for me, because of this building, the whole PIF had a list, right? And we were at the top of the list for Mountain View. How are you going to transition from that PIF to this five-year plan without us feeling like we got kicked down the road again, for example?
Tom, I don't, I don't know that the, putting it in a five-year plan changes the outcome of what the SAC comes up with. So I think whatever the SAC comes up with, which for those of you who don't know, Strategic Alternative Committee to Option Two, will be, has to be funded in the five-year plan. And so I think it just gives us a more realistic horizon. I mean, I don't know where I'm going to be in 15 years, so why do we budget out 15 years?
Right.
But five years, I'm very interested in. So, and I'm 100% behind letting the committee make the recommendation. None, so, and I think we all are.
But it's broader, it's broader than that for me, because we're talking numbers two through 10 on the PIF list. I mean.
Right.
We had, we waited in line forever, right?
Yeah.
And other people are waiting forever, and I'm sure they're going to be like, "Yikes, what's going to happen to my blank, my blank, my blank?"
Right.
So what process will there be to honor the old expenditure list in the new five-year plan? Or is it up for grabs?
Well, I, you're asking the first question I can't answer, because it's, it's a board, it's all my colleagues here.
Sure.
And so, doing it in a five-year plan versus doing it in a 15-year plan, I don't think impacts the SAC's work. They're just going to have to say, "Okay, here's, here's what we recommend, here's what we think it's going to cost, and how many people are in favor of it?" I think one of the things, Tommy, you probably noticed it, everybody on the SAC has a favorite activity, and that.
Right.
We selected members for that purpose. So we invited the stakeholders to come and participate in the final decision. And as you know, we've been through hundreds of, would you say hundreds of hours? Probably at least. Going through data, so we make database decisions, discussing, you know, the various needs and options of the community, and advocating, which we actively encourage people to do, is to advocate for what they think is best for Sun City.
Yeah.
Other than that, at the end of the day, guys got to come, come forward.
But I'm not talking about SAC, because I tried to say I'm talking more broadly about the PIF list and all those people behind us who are waiting patiently for their projects to be completed. So I guess I'm asking you, please, for the Board to look at.
Yeah.
How you're going to honor the old PIF list or not, and how that's going to impact the new five-year plan.
Let me just say one thing. Our other projects, like we talked about softball, the cost went up 30%.
Correct.
So if you're, if you had your list and it was going to be $10 million, you better figure on taking 30% off of that, because that's what the cost has gone up. So you're not going to get everything on your list, because we can't afford it. I mean, it's, I hate to say that, but that's reality in today's world. It's about 30% right now.
And I understand that, for sure.
Yeah.
And because the Mountain View project, being delayed by 18 months, or whatever it's long it's been, has already raised the cost 20, 30%. So we're losing 20 to 30% of the value that can be put into this area because of the delays. So I'm very aware of that problem. I've got a list here, let's see. Oh, that 25, it's curious, that 25,000, it's the discretion of the manager? Is that like each project, are there limits on the number of projects, or is it for the entire year?
I do not believe there are a limit to the projects. Normally, the manager, the team will let us know, let the Board know.
Yeah.
What they are, but as far as I know, there is no limit on them. Kevin?
I would feel comfortable.
Yeah.
To say 24,000, but no, you're approval. We have a list of capital.
Guess you're going to come.
That are approved as part of the budget. That's actually on our website, so people can look and see what those projects are for 2023. Same process will happen for 2024. We'll have a capital project list that the Budget and Finance Committee will recommend to the Board for approval, and that is management's list of approved capital projects for the year. Obviously, things are going to pop up during the year, something large breaks that needs to be replaced. We would then follow the bylaws in terms of whether that's something that we can repair under our normal operating budget, or if that's something that we're going to have to go to the Board with a capital project request for. But the capital project list is part of the budget. It's reviewed and approved by the Board, and that's accessible on our website for anybody that's curious what that list includes for 2023.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Do any of the directors who are dialing in want to make any statements? Karen, are you there?
Yes, I would like to. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, so I wanted to respond to the member who identified himself as Jeff about what our.
Karen? Karen, you're starting to break up.
Okay. Not sure what to do about that. I have sole reception where I am right now. I'm not sure if it's on my end or your end. Are you, are you able to hear me now?
Slightly better.
Okay. So I have two comments. One was responding to the member who identified himself as Jeff about our annual PIF average PIF income. And I just wanted to say that the number of homes that we sell varies quite bit year to year. Sometimes it's been as low as 1,400 homes, sometimes it's been as high as 2,300 homes. So that number 1,750 is a fairly conservative average of that. But basically, if we were selling 2,000 homes a year at $4,000, it would be an $8 million income. So I think you could say that generally, the PIF income that we have year by year, it's not 4.5 million, but between 6 and 8 million at current PIF level. So I just wanted to get out there because information is put up that's not quite accurate and it can lead people to believe that it's true. But I also wanted to, I have a question for my fellow director, for John. You're proposing that we collapse the PIF and capital projects into a single account and remove all restrictions regarding what PIF funds can be designated toward. And of course, that would require quite a lot of changes to our, our documents. And, but I'm curious right now, I think, I believe that you have an idea right now of what the actual consequences of doing that would be as far as the Mountain View project is concerned. And I was just wondering, John, if you could give us an idea of what you think would be an appropriate amount of money to designate for the Mountain View project? Given that the SAC right now is at a little bit of an impasse, we can't really give our architect any kinds of instructions or tasks until we've told her how much money we have available for that. So I'm just asking, that's not a decision that SAC can make? That's a decision that has to come from the budgetary powers that be from the Board itself. So I'm asking, John, if you could tell us what you think would be an appropriate amount of money to tell our architect we have available for the Mountain View project?
John, she, John, she asked if, John? She asked if you could tell an appropriate amount of money that you have budgeted for the Mountain View project?
Oh. No, I don't know what the number is. We had, had asked for the Board to, this, let me back up. The SAC Committee had asked the Board for direction, including Karen. And because we're in the middle of the budget and the process, and in the middle of the SAC Committee, because we don't know what it's going to, going to look like, we can't, couldn't give that advice, and we said that at the last SAC Committee.
As of right now, the figure is 27.3 million for the Mountain View project until it, unless it gets changed. That's the figure right now.
Okay, can I just add that that figure represents the work that was done by CCBG and the contractor's estimate for that work? The committee's certainly not done, as I said earlier, they're working with an architect. So the more realistic number is, once the committee decides exactly what will be in the project, the architect will then be able to give an actual number of what it will take to perform that work.
Have a question on the rolling five-year long-term budget setup. Is that going to be subject to the same hold that has been put on the Mountain View project that was previously approved?
Yeah. Can I answer that as part of the question? Because I feel like there's a follow-up you've got. Okay. Yes, it's a plan. Plans change. So on the rolling five-year plan, you would have the ability to change the plan. It's always tougher to change directions with a big project, because it goes over a long period of time, and the funding has to be, is more complicated. You have, you have to fund it, sometimes you have to phase it, sometimes you, you know, this, that, and the other thing. But the answer to your question honestly, yes, a plan is always subject to change.
So if something has been approved and is mid-project, does that mean it can be stopped?
And I guess I would, would ask what, at what stage can a project be stopped? Okay? And, or changed? We're not just talking about stop or change, or, you know, change orders, all of those kinds of things. And in my mind, our fiduciary duty is to deliver the best product for the best price for all the members. So let's say we have a project that has, the walls are, are completely up. Our fiduciary duty is that that project should not sit there unfinished. It should, it should be completed, because if it sits there unfinished, it means we blew the funding.
I see.
That's it.
Tom, you were done, right?
Oh, Tom?
Last question, and it's probably the tickly one, ticklish one. Why is this coming up in the, in the summer in a special meeting that was announced with 72 hours' notice, rather than at a regular Board meeting with lots of opportunities for people to come and share their views? It feels like it's, it's too hasty to my mind.
Yeah, Tom.
I'm going to answer that question.
Yes.
Because I called the meeting. And here's why I called the meeting. This group here has had many questions, and we're about to go back into our committee season. So here's what's going to happen. The SAC is going to complete its work, and then it's going to need three town hall meetings. The budget's going to complete its work, and it's going to need a planning session or two. So when you reflect on how many opportunities we have to meet, given that we meet twice a month, it seemed more practical to introduce, and that's all we're doing here today, is introducing that there's a new budget process, the budget itself is still being worked on, and it just seemed that it was only fair to tell you what it's all about. I also wanted to give the members an update on the projects, as I did at the beginning of the meeting. So I simply took this opportunity to do that, because it's very important to this Board that we communicate with our members. You're the most important people. And so every opportunity we have to communicate, we want to take it. And I hope that, that you can understand that.
I think that's.
I would like to just talk for a moment about budget process. In the prior years, the Budget and Finance Committee met three times for the whole year. The Board got the budget, or the committee got the budget, had to approve it in the final meeting, came to the Board, the Board approved it, and we had little to know, fingers in the pie. This is a completely different process. We've been meeting, I don't know how many budget meetings there's been this year, but more than the last five years put together. So we're coming at this from a very logical standpoint, trying to develop something that is understandable to our citizens, that's understandable to us, and it's not management-driven, it's all of us collaborating to make a better process. And that's why we're doing this today, to give you a heads up on what the hell's going on around here.
And I would add one more piece to what Jim is saying, and that is this. When I moved here, I attended budget meetings, and members who attended were not allowed to hold or read the budget document. And we certainly, as older folks, see it in the small print on the screen. Today, under this Board, we have members who attend the meeting, they hear what we have to say. If they ask for what's being handed out, it's given to them. The budget is not a secret, it's your budget. It's what runs the community you live in, and it should be known to you. You, you have asked for transparency, and you have been given transparency. And I, I really can't see how much more we can make transparent. We've done just about everything. Jean?
I would just, I would just like to add, when I was running last year as a candidate for the Board, I attended many of the different committee meetings, one of them being the Budget and Finance. I was there when the management presented the, the budget to the committee. The committee took less than an hour and a half to approve the budget that the management had been working months on. No one else had seen it, an hour and a half. We all believe in communication. It is the most important thing besides transparency. And yes, the timing was unfortunate. There were, by my count, 62 people here, and I realize it's summer and the snowbirds aren't here. But hopefully... But hopefully, our YouTube video will reach many of them, and the discussions will flow. And we'll have our town meetings and our planning sessions, and we'll hear from you because you are the people who we need to hear from. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gene. On that note, I would like to, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Pearson.
We've got one more back here.
Okay, great.
I'm on the SAC committee, and I just want to understand completely before I go there tomorrow. At this point in time, we have a budget of 27.3 million, correct?
For the SAC?
Yes.
Yes.
For the Mountain View project.
Mountain View project.
And 27.3 is our budget right now?
We could not have started this project if there were not monies in the PIF to cover it.
Right. And that won't change unless John's proposal comes back to the board and the board approves it. Am I correct?
We're contemplating, well, the SAC is charged with having its recommendations by the board meeting of September, which is about 30 days away.
And our, but the budget that we're, our recommendations have to fit the 27 million dollar budget?
Yes.
Okay.
All along, the entire time, I've been saying to the SAC, you have a budget of 27 million dollars.
And that will not change unless John's proposal goes through? Should not change, put it that way.
Here's what's going to change, and I mentioned it just a short time ago. What the work the SAC is doing does not look like the work that was done by CCBG that was estimated by the contractor at 27 million dollars. I suspect, and just from my own experience, that the way the SAC is intending to design the project, it should come in less than 27 million dollars, which is good because that 27 million dollars has to include potential change orders.
Yes.
Which no one has talked about at all. So I think it can all be done within that 27 million dollars.
Okay, that's what I wanted to be clear on. The 27 million is our max, hopefully we'll come in under. If we give the board a proposal, and it comes back at 30 million, will the SAC committee have the opportunity to go back and review their proposal and reduce what they asked for?
Absolutely.
Okay. It's just not dead in the water.
That would be what has to happen. You'd have to go back to the drawing board, and you'd have to say, got to reconfigure a bit to get this where it needs to be.
Okay, but it just won't die?
No.
The project won't die? Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Bill Pearson. I attended, for the first time in 20 years, the last three Budget and Finance Committee meetings. They were fascinating, to say the least, and today's meeting is really just the beginning of a change in a process that I'll be very blunt and just say has been a failure on how we've exercised budgeting and the process of it for a good number of years. John, two meetings ago, mentioned that we were going to work from a balanced budget. I've served on organizations, run organizations, and we always had balanced budgets. Most organizations work with dollars in, dollars out. Now, you can have a little bit left at the end, or you can miss the mark by a little bit. But somehow, we took no increases during an inflationary period from 2017 through 2022, took no increases, and still put 11 million dollars in the bank. Anybody with a half a brain has to look in the mirror and say, I wonder how that happened? And the answer is really simple, guys. We didn't spend the money because we didn't fix the things we were committed to fix. Your job as a board is oversight. If you build the process, which is what you're doing right now, right, you not only then fix dollar amounts that meet or equal what's coming in, and then at the end of the year, you make sure that you spent that money on the projects that are on the list. It's not just an accounting procedure, it's an accountability procedure. And we've had a failure to account for too many years, and what you're doing is exactly true to the commitment you've made to this community, to come here and listen to what we have to say. Now, if you sit home and don't come, shame on you. If you're out of town, watch it on TV, watch it on your computer. I don't care how you do it, but you got to start paying attention. We, as owners of this community, have a responsibility to hold you accountable, you have a responsibility to hold management accountable, and when everybody plays the role, we get exactly what you're proposing, John. You meet your mission, your values, statements. You deliver on your promises to the community, and you get to where you got to go to, or you want to go to. When you have no plan, when you don't hold anybody accountable, we end up exactly where we are today, swimming upstream, trying to catch up on 20 million dollars on deferred expenses that should have been done that weren't. Hey, we saved the money, great, but now we got to figure out how to fix it over the next five years. You can do it over time, you can do it so it's not painful, and in the end, we'll be a better community. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. And speaking of thank-yous, we have lots of them to make today. We need to thank Mr. McCurdy and his staff. Mr. McCurdy, will you name your senior people here, please?
Angie Nelson. Dan Follett.
Introduce yourself.
Jo Lynn Higgins.
Marsha Johnson.
Alan Tricia.
Teresa Serino.
Alan Kleinhands.
Doreen Rafferty.
And last but not least, Carla Young.
I want to especially thank the...
We have more comments.
Can I finish? I want to particularly thank Mr. Kleinhands and his folks. This being a somewhat older building, it was quite a difficult task to get this all set up here today. And I also want to take a minute to thank the facility staff for getting this room ready for us. That was quite a task as well. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. I heard the other day, you know, all our facilities, we have comment cards. And I heard, well, our people are afraid to put their names on the comment cards. Please, if you see something that needs to be fixed, fill out the comment card. If you want to put my name on it, put my name on it, that's fine. And when they call me, I'll go look at it and try to get it fixed. But the more we know, the more we can get things fixed. So please, take the initiative to fill out those cards if you see something.
I see a hand in the back.
Can you use the microphone, folks? Don't be shy, please come up and use them. Get your steps in today.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. My name is Bob Howitz, and I use the Sun Dial Workout Facility. And about eight weeks ago, the disinfecting wipes was empty, so I lifted up the lid, and they had fallen down, and the bottom of the lid was moldy and rusty. And I told the facility attendant about it.
Sir, sir, I'm going to have to stop your comment, because this meeting is about the budget. And so what I urge you, what I urge you to do is...
He just mentioned comment cards, and I'm going to tell you, they don't work.
What?
So noted. Ask him to stand up, please.
Hi, everyone. I think I have three comments, one question, and I'll wait till the end to get your response, please. Regarding the vision statement, my personal opinion is, I think being a national leader in a retirement community like this is just perfect. I don't feel as though we need to be a premier, the state-of-the-art, the most expensive, the most fancy. I think what we have, the sound foundation, the national leader, I think is just great, and that does not need to change. Another point that was mentioned earlier, I truly appreciate that we are not going to go into debt. I truly appreciate that we're not going to raise the debt ceiling like some other governments out there. So somehow, we should be able to live within this budget of in the year, for the year, and project five years out, and put something on the bucket list for 10, 15 years out. The third comment here is, number, well, the last one I wrote down. What's so difficult about having this space be used for the RCSC meetings? This is fabulous. And getting used to setting up this space, this is perfect. I'd love to come down here more often for the meetings, rather than displacing so many other people at the Sun Dial Auditorium. Let's see. Then also, my other comment, you know, I truly appreciate our associates. I was an associate at the North Golf Course for about six months. And do we have a place where we can give an annual gratuity to either our management staff and/or our hourly associates? You know, in all the other big communities out there, retirement communities, assisted living communities, they have a very nice annual appreciation at the end of the year, the first of the year. And I really, really appreciate our staff. I do not want our staff to feel as though they have to take a cut in pay in order to work here. And if I have to contribute $1,000 a year, I am happy to do that, so long as it goes directly to the staff. The question I have is, Mr. Fast, would you please explain, repeat, what we can and cannot buy or sell for property?
Yes.
Thank you.
According to the bylaws, as I recollect them, you cannot buy, you cannot sell an asset with a value of more than $25,000. You can buy anything, I guess, as long as you have funding for it. It's just a, it's a limitation on, you know, we can't be land speculators, I guess, or we just can't sell it. And I always look at the Articles of Incorporation as an immovable force. There's no way you're ever going to get 3,250 people in a room to agree to change them. So they're as good as the Ten Commandments, in my mind. Does that help? Okay.
Hi, this is Jeff Bach again. I'd like to clarify something that I, a statement that I made before. At 1,700 people at $4,000, that's 6.8 million dollars. My question is, how much do we have in that capital fund right now?
Can I turn it over to Kevin?
Hi, so we have several buckets, for want of a better word.
Jeez.
Touchy, touchy. So we have several different buckets where we have funds. The PIF fund has about $31 million in it right now. We have a capital reserve, which is about $5 million. Capital reserve is a fund or an account that we never touch. That was set up many years ago by the board. I believe it was set up as a really rainy-day fund. There was a really unfortunate situation where the roof of Sun Dial collapsed, and I think that was the genesis of building that capital reserve fund, to have that money in the event of a catastrophic issue like that. We have another, say, 20 million in our just general checking account and in the money market. You may have heard the term "carryforward." Just to reiterate this for probably the 20th time, we do not have an account that is a carryforward account. The carryforward is a calculated number based on what we have in the checking account. And we take away from that amount what we've budgeted for capital projects but have not yet spent. So that money is taken off that capital, or, I'm sorry, the checking account balance, and that's the amount that we put on our balance sheet or on our treasurer's report every month as the carryforward.
Thank you.
Good.
All right, ladies and gentlemen.
I'd like to say something to what Kevin just said.
Yes, Jim.
If you're more of a visual person than just a hearing figures, I believe Director Fast and possibly others have talked about putting together a, I don't, class, a presentation, something so that we all can understand the budget better, budget speak better.
We have a draft of a financial education plan for those that have trouble sleeping. We're planning to offer it at 9 o'clock at night, so that, you know, this will cure you. But what we're trying to do is just to, for those that want to, to establish a common language, so that you understand your budget. It's all of our budgets. It's not the board's budget, it's not the management's budgets, it's the members' budget, it's the employees' budget, it's the board's budget, all together. So we're trying...
And I just want to say, my idea was nixed. I wanted Kevin to do like a 60-minute interview, tic, 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 and tell us the budget and how things work, et cetera, but others didn't think that was the best idea.
Okay, so on that note, I'm going to thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us today, as we continue our efforts to work together to build a strong community and secure our self-governance well into the future. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. [applause] This is a copywritten production of the Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated and is intended for the sole purpose of informing our recreation center members. Any duplication, copying, transmission, broadcast, or use, including electronic and social media, is strictly prohibited without the prior written consent from the Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated. Thank you for watching.